Okay, everyone out there, welcome to our Planning Commission meeting tonight. We're so glad to have you here. So exciting. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It is six o'clock on February 7th, and we're gonna have our flag salute by Commissioner Watts.
Please stand up and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Gary. Roll call Denise.
Commissioner Solis.
Here.
Commissioner Ruiz.
Here.
Commissioner Watts.
Here.
Chairman or Chairperson, Linay Trejo.
Here.
And Vice Chair Bob Hagel.
Here.
Okay, and do we have any public comments?
We have none.
Okay, then I'm gonna not read that. In our consent calendar, all matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of thirty minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to 6:00 PM and submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. All right, our first item are the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Go move consent calendar. Move, adopt the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All right. So first, sorry, a motion by Gary and a second by Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll also say aye just let the record reflect because my absence, but I did watch video back too.
Okay, all right, so motion carried. All right, business part of the meeting. Members of the public may address the commission on business items that appear on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments and submitted to Planning Commission at temeculaca.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. All right, item number two and our first item under business is selection of chair and vice chair for calendar year 2024. I will say one thing before we, first thing I want to say is I have, I have been honored to be chair this year and with this planning commission that we have, our colleagues, I'm grateful for each one of you. And just to kind of say a little bit about being chair, it's very important that you're committed to two meetings a month. Sorry, yes, four meetings a month. Wow, okay, two plus two meetings a month. Yeah, so two planning commission meetings and two city council meetings. It's really important to be able to commit to all four of those each month. And so that's really important as a chair. And the vice chair, I think it's really important to also be able to commit to that in case the chair cannot be there. So just putting that out there. And then I will open it up to any nominations at this time. For, let's, let's start with chair.
So I would make a motion that we appoint Commissioner Bob Hagel as chair for 2024.
Second.
Okay, we have a first, I'm sorry, a motion with Adam and a second Gary for Bob Hagel to be chair for 2024. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, yeah, you better vote for yourself. Okay.
I was waiting for the audience to say something.
Oh, you're gonna be waiting a while, all right. Okay, so for vice chair, do we have any nominations at this time?
I would nominate Linay.
Oh, thank you, okay. All right, we have a.
A second.
And a second by Fernando. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay.
Congratulations to both of you.
All right, congratulations, okay, so we're gonna switch seats. Right? Okay.
Yeah, switch the plaques.
Oh, 'cause they have to sit in the middle, huh?
I remember last year when, before the gavel could drop, Gary was out of the seat and moved.
Hey, that, that's four, four nights, four nights a month.
Yeah, you're not kidding.
So, speaking of gavels, on behalf of the department, just wanted to say thank you for a great year.
Thank you.
And we'd also like to present you with this plaque.
Thank you.
Presented to Linay Trejo in appreciation of your dedicated services, Planning Commission Chairman, Chairperson to the citizens of Temecula 2023.
Thank you, that's so nice.
Good job.
That's really nice. Thank you so much. Well, I would like to say also that I'm so appreciative to staff. And I know Luke's not here tonight, especially to him. I met with him quite a bit throughout the year and we had some really important things that we did, starting in February, with our CUP revocation. So that was, started off the year with a bang. Anyway, so I appreciate all of staff, Denise, all she does behind the scenes, the little feet under the water, right? And Mari Sella, thank you so much for all you do to keep us on track. Appreciate that. And Stu, always here, ready to help. And everybody that's not here, that is wonderful in our staff. And of course Ron over there, don't forget Ron. So thank you to all of you for making my job easier by the support that you give me. So thank you so much.
Okay, we will go on to business number, let's see, subcommittees, business number three. And what I'd suggest is that we perhaps, to make this go quicker, is just talk about any changes we would like to make. And if you wanna get off a committee, get on a committee to bring it up and I'll, is that?
Can I go first?
Yeah, go ahead.
Great, that's a great idea. I totally agree. I counted up the ones and there's pretty big discrepancy in the numbers.
Yeah, yep.
I went through and there's one, two, three, four that I have a desire to give up on that subcommittee in trying to make it more evenly balanced. So if you want me to go through those four?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, Uptown, Temecula, Specific Plans, no wait, that's not it. Commercial Center Subcommittee.
While we're on that, what is the commercial, what specifically? Is that the one over off of Rancho Cal? Is that what we're talking about?
So I think it would apply to any of our commercial centers. It could be the Target Center, Palm Plaza Shopping Center.
Like what we meant for the Target Center, okay, okay.
With the exception, I guess, of like Uptown or any other, any other specific area.
Correct.
Go ahead, Gary.
Do you want, you want me to do all four?
Yeah, do all four so we can see what.
Well, actually, I think it's three now that I look at it. Summers Bend Project. Bob, you and I are on that, so I would, I would like to withdraw or make that opening available. And then the third one would be the Sarafina Subcommittee. Bob, you and I are on that one also, but I don't even know what that one's about.
Sarafina.
Okay, now I'm clear.
Sarafina's a tract off Nicholas Road.
Yeah, off Nicholas.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Anyhow, those are.
I know that one well from, from the traffic committee 'cause we had a lot of business up there.
So that would knock me down from nine to six. And that's probably more in line with, I think, a balanced workload.
Okay, so that's three, was there?
No, that was it.
That was it?
Yeah.
Okay. Fernando, what, do you have any desires?
I'm pretty open, so if I find out who, where there's some type of opening, then I'll, I'll try to fit in.
There's three, there's three right there if you wanna claim to any.
Oh, anyone else gonna, is that, is it? Or anyone giving a penny?
Well, I think this is where, I think the real imbalance is.
Okay, I'll take them.
You're wide open for horse trading.
All right, let's do it then, I'll take all three of them.
Okay.
Is there anything left on Summers Bend, really? Or is that gonna still, yeah, are there any of them that are kind of, were retiring a little bit?
No, they're all still relevant. The one thing I would say is there are a few of them that have been long-term and ongoing, specifically Uptown, Temecula, Specific Plan, some of the hotels and the other projects in there. Old Town, of course, lot going on in Old Town, especially with the hotel. Alter, that's been long-going. And then the hospital subcommittee. So I think consistency among those four would be a consideration, but the rest, wide open.
So what about Truax Hotel?
Truax Hotel at this point is expired, so.
So do we even have, should have that one, or?
Something, I would hope would someday come forward, but we have nothing on the horizon right now, so.
So we would definitely be more than a year, year or two away then.
You could leave it on the list, but it would be inactive.
Yeah.
Relatively inactive.
All right, tell me the four again that you said you want continuity on, hospital.
Starting from the bottom, hospital, and then moving up, Alter.
Yep.
Old Town.
Yep.
And then the Uptown.
Okay, okay.
Just project applicants, some of the bigger projects there. Lot of history on some of those.
Yeah, for sure.
Adam, do you have any changes you'd like to see made?
I'm happy serving, ironically you say that. I mean, Alter would be one that if there was an opening, I wouldn't mind jumping on, but for the ones that, I think if we're trying to even them up, I counted five or six myself, I've been, I've been happy with unless that's someone that somebody has a burning desire to jump on. We can, you know, we can look at that, but I definitely like staying on the hospital for sure. The municipal code has been, has been great. Human services, we haven't met a ton, so.
What, tell me about human services, Matt. Is it human services, is that what we're doing? We're serving humans?
Yeah, human services. So it might be related to, you know, maybe community services or something to do with the homeless outreach team or something like that. That would complement that, yeah.
That was my understanding, that was more.
But I don't think we've ever really met on that, okay. The other question was on Butterfield, Temecula Parkway. What is that? Remind me, I mean, I know where Butterfield is and Temecula Parkway, but.
Yeah, so.
Is that the vacant land there?
So at Butterfield and Temecula Parkway, there's the northwest corner across from the Corona property. Then a little farther up, south of Deportola, I think.
And that's.
On the other side is in the city.
Paseo, Paseo's gonna finish that, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, that, the, the one at the northwest corner is Paseo del Sol.
Or the southwest corner.
Ron, do you have a little?
Yeah, as I recall, we created this one because there, we have the Paseo del Sol activity, but there's also a large storm drain that's being put in affecting the properties to the east, which would include Savala and the Big Horse Feed, which are in the city. And so I remember that Luke wanted this one in because there was so much activity or questions regarding what commercially could be done or rezoned due to some discrepancies in how particularly the Savala property has a dual zoning. And also it borders the county, so we've gotten some applications from the county with housing developments just to the east of the Savala property in the city. So that, as I recall, that's what Luke.
Yeah, that's, that's right, thanks, Ron.
Hi.
You have anything else?
That was just a question I had on that. I mean, I, and short-term rentals, is that, that's kind of inactive also, correct? At this point?
Yeah, we're still.
What I'm saying is I'm on a few, but they're inactive.
Yeah, short-term rentals is pretty.
So that's why I'm, I'm not gonna go off of them because they're kind of inactive anyway unless they come back, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so I'm happy with what I'm on, unless we have any other changes.
The four that we wanna stay consistent on.
Or three, there's three, that would be.
Four, hospital.
I think the three that Gary's coming off, that Fernando would take.
Yeah, 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 I'm talking about the other, yeah.
And then there's the four that were recommended, stay the same for continuity.
Oh, okay, all right, yeah. So then the, the changes would be, then Commercial Center Subcommittee, Trejo, Fernando, Solis, then Summers Bend, Hagel, Solis, and Sarafina, Hagel, Solis. And I think that's it. Is there any other changes anybody sees? Okay, I think we're good then.
Do you need a, do we need a motion to?
I think we should just do a motion to accept it.
Okay, so do I have a motion for approval?
Aye.
Oh, go ahead.
Some move.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, Trejo and Ruiz, and all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we'll go on to the next, which is the presentation on the Old Town Local Advisory Committee. And I think, Matt, you're gonna do it.
Yeah, I'll take that. This, this is set up for presenting, so it's easier just to move chairs. So Luke's at the City Managers Conference up in LA. He had planned to give this presentation to just give you an update on the Old Town Local Review Board and its reorganization as the Old Town Local Advisory Committee. So this is just a pared-down version of the presentation he gave to the city council on the 12th, and I'll just run through it. This is a receive and file, so at the end, we can have a discussion if you have any questions, and then we'll bring that back for consideration. So the presentation is broke down into four sections, the first being little background on the Old Town Local Review Board, and then Old Town's evolution, the reorganization proposal, and then a discussion of next steps. So some background, the Old Town Local Review Board and the specific plan were adopted in 1994. The emphasis was on historic preservation and development plan or development project review, specifically architecture. And the Old Town Local Review Board was set up with five members on three-year terms. And then currently, there are only two members and no quorum, so it's been inactive for more than a year. Before you is the Old Town Regulating Plan. So it was originally adopted in 1994. There were a few different updates, and then there was a comprehensive update in 2010 that Stuart Fisk was the project manager on that. And this is the site plan of the districts. And yesterday in the joint workshop, a lot of the focus was on the downtown core, the area between the arches. And then you see there the neighborhood residential, hotel overlay, civic, and then the residential limited mixed use. So why propose a reorganization of the Old Town Local Review Board? Really, it's Old Town's evolution, and you saw that in the presentation yesterday. Luke showed that graphic. If you were standing on the steps looking across City Hall, the difference over the last 25 years. So back then, it was Sleepy Antiques Retail District with a few daytime residents. And then we all know it shut down about five, six o'clock. I think Roses was the only thing that was open back then. And of course, now we have a successful retail restaurant, you know, downtown entertainment district. So there's definitely a need for more active management by the city and the community. And what would a reorganization be trying to achieve? You can see it's emphasized there in red, improving public safety and code compliance through community member-led coordination, communication, and economic development efforts. So the proposal that was presented was currently, I mentioned the Old Town Local Review Board membership was five members of the community, no specific affiliations or other technical requirements to be appointed. I do think they look for an architect and a business member or a business owner down here, but there wasn't anything specified. So the reorganization proposal is to move from five to seven members with seats of representation from VTV, The Chamber, the OTTA or the Old Town Temecula Association, the Historic Society, an architect or engineer, and then two spots, one for a multifamily residential property owner or just a property owner, and then number seven would be a Temecula resident at large. And I think the preference would be for a resident down here in Old Town, but it's a resident at large, so moving from five to seven members.
So number six, Old Town Multifamily Residential Property Owner. And then the resident wanting somebody from Old Town, but it could be anywhere in the city.
Correct, yeah.
I have a quick question. Does number six mean it's either or? In other words, multifamily versus, say, a single-family residence person?
Yeah, it could be someone who owns one of the affordable housing properties. That would be the multifamily residential property owner, or it could be one of the single-family homes. Yeah, it's either or.
Good, thank you.
If we're taking questions, can I ask one here real quick?
Sure.
So the, the first three being that those are organizations, it's still a dedicated person from each of those?
Correct, yeah, they would appoint a representative.
Got it, so it'll, it'll be consistent, I guess, what I'm looking at.
Say that again?
It would, it would be consistent for, so say for VTV, for example, there'd be a person representing VTV, but that one person would be the member there.
Yeah, so VTV, VTV would nominate a representative, and then the city council would appoint that person, but they wouldn't be switching out the representative at each meeting. We would want consistency.
Understood, thank you.
So are number five, six, and seven the only ones that are like applications from people? Anybody, 'cause the Historic Society would also nominate someone, correct?
Correct.
So the first four would be nominations from their own societies or their own.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
And then the other three would be like we do the other commissions, would be just, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the expanded responsibilities, the existing responsibilities are really historic and cultural preservation. So the Old Town specific plan contains historic properties and historic buildings. And the Old Town Local Review Board was responsible for making certificate, they would approve the certificate of historical appropriateness. So that was the board you went to if you had a historic property. And then they were also responsible for architecture and development review. And they were an advisory body. So a lot of times, if we had a development plan, it would go to the Old Town Local Review Board. We'd get their input, and then that would be reported to the Planning Commission and then ultimately City Council. And basically, that's not meeting the needs of today's Old Town.
Matt, hold on one second.
Yep.
Matt, you know, when I was on the Old Town Local Review Board, it also included advisory responsibility for all the historic buildings, not only in Old Town, but the ones that existed outside as well. Is that going to still be the same approach?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, there are a few historic buildings that are outside of the specific Old Town district, but they're listed in that specific plan. So next slide is really the expanded responsibilities. So you're moving from historical, historical and cultural preservation, architecture and development review, to a whole bunch of new responsibilities. The first being a potential parking improvement district or a parking management district, or a bid, a business improvement district, some sort of governing board that would be advisory. They would also make recommendations for the use of parking revenues. They'd be responsible for oversight of grant and/or loan programs utilizing parking revenues. And you can kind of see where this is going. Obviously, everyone likes the free parking in Old Town, but as the, the district evolves, that's definitely a potential revenue source that will be looked at. And obviously, there's a whole process that goes with that. Involvement in determining priority of Old Town infrastructure improvements with the ability to make proposals and for them to be studied. Also, the ability to develop proposal recommendations for the commission and city council, direct marketing and advertising of Old Town, develop and manage comprehensive signage in Old Town. That is very important, code enforcement. Dealing with signs in Old Town is quite the, quite the process, so they can definitely help with that. Special events, so with TCSD and the special events, there's a lot of coordination with the private property owners down here. Conflict resolution. You heard yesterday with regard to the idea of outdoor live entertainment. I think Councilmember Schwenk said, you know, I'm, I'm good with a pilot program, but I think we should definitely get this in front of the Old Town Local Advisory Committee. So that, that would be another one of the roles. And then develop and implement a long-term comprehensive strategy for Old Town, and then all of the existing responsibilities. And I'm sure you may have questions on that.
I do, yeah. Okay, so first question is kind of overall. So as an advisory committee, when you say develop and manage comprehensive signage in Old Town, that has to be approved by the city council, correct?
Correct.
I mean, they're just advising.
That's correct.
They're not making any decisions for that, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so on any of those things, would have to maybe go to Planning Commission and then City Council, depending on what it is?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the first thing, so are they an advisory of, okay, I'm not sure what number one is.
So if, if a parking management district were to be set up, they would be the body, the local advisory committee, that would inform the city council.
They would be the governing board, or what's?
They would be, yeah, they would be the governing board of the improvement district, but with final decisions being made by the city council. So they would be advising.
I don't know if you want to say governing board in there, 'cause it sounds like the city council to me. I, I don't know, just putting that out there.
Yeah.
But that number one is kind of confusing, 'cause it almost sounds like they're creating a governing board, which I don't know.
I think the intent is, and this is all going to be developed, is for the city council to basically appoint them as the governing board and give them that responsibility, then to then, and then to then advise back to the city council.
I think the word governing is the one that, that's maybe a term that isn't probably the best terminology for it, so.
So the governing body or the legislative body?
But they're not legislative.
Advisory body, advisory, I mean.
Yeah, I, you know what, I think just the advisory body is the best way. Yeah, you know what, I think just the advisory body is the best way to refer to it.
Anything governing or legislative is City Council.
Advisory board.
Advisory board.
That's what they used to, it was always Old Town Local Review Board, so they were always advisory as well.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Thanks.
And then the city's reorganization proposal goals. Organized, active, and ongoing stakeholder participation and buy-in in Old Town backed by a funding source. So again, going back to that parking management district. Active management of Old Town for Old Town's current needs. A body that has influence in the Old Town community, so landowners, merchants, residents, visitors. For a long time, the idea of a business improvement district has been brought up. It's been recommended to the local merchants, but their ability to organize, it's been a challenge. So this is really taking the place of that, is the Old Town Local Advisory Committee becoming part of that role through the professional representation through VTV and The Chamber and those other organizations.
And also, they would have a voice with the OTTA, right, as the merchants? Well, and a voice of the residents and everybody that's actually on the advisory committee, right?
Right.
So, yeah.
Again, an advisory role over a dedicated funding source for Old Town, looking at improvements, activities, planning, and then working towards a comprehensive approach to Old Town, the look and feel, parking events, marketing. So if you can imagine, we have all these different events. We have Chill during the winter, the parade, the rod run. We organize, the city organizes rod run, and then the merchants all have a different idea about what should be done and how we should capitalize on rod run. And this body would help organize a lot of those thoughts and different opinions. I think it's going to be a buffer between the City Council and, you know, the merchants to help everything get organized.
But they wouldn't actually organize anything like the Community Services does? They're just advising what we think would be a good idea. We think what would make this better.
Yeah, they might put on their agenda rod run in two months. That would allow the local merchants to come in, give feedback. They might take that, package it, and say, here's our recommendation for rod run. Or here's some things you should consider as part of rod run. And then stakeholder buy-in for RSO and code enforcement activities when necessary. So if you can imagine different businesses, a number of code visits or enforcement actions that could then be reported out at the Old Town Local Advisory Committee and then perhaps some peer pressure applied to the local businesses down there. And then continue to administer the historic preservation and development application review per the Old Town specific plan. So that was the presentation given on the twelfth. They did pass a resolution reorganizing it as the Old Town Local Advisory Committee, and they're going to make appointments on February twenty-seventh, and then we're targeting the first meeting to be in March.
Will they also meet once a month like they have in the past?
We're going to have a meeting on that to figure it out, but I think that's what we're going to start with is once a month.
Yeah.
And see where it goes.
How, I know like the Ready Commission has seven. I've always wondered, like, seven seems like a lot of people to make decisions. How, you know, how has that? I mean, I've been to a couple of the Ready Commission meetings, but I think I've always been grateful that we have five, because, you know, you just have two more people that you've got to figure it out. So I understand the representation and that they need that, but yeah, I just, I don't know. I don't know if that's a question or just a warning.
You know, five's a great size, but I think because of the representation and the different viewpoints in Old Town, it just needed to be a little larger.
And then are they looking to stagger the initial terms? I know like when the ready was formed, there was a certain number of three-year, two-year, one-year appointments so that not everyone has potentially turnover.
That's the intent.
Similar.
Thank you, Matt. Questions? Discussion? Concerns, what does everybody think?
Well, I think it's great. Like, we haven't had anything there, like you said, for a while. And I think it hasn't been, even when we did have it there, it probably wasn't functioning at as best as it could, maybe. And so I think this gives it kind of an injection of energy and a purpose for each person that's on there. So I think that's great. I know it's been a lot of work for, Luke's done a lot of this, I think.
He has, and he has a vision. I think it will evolve. Sorry, I moved chairs on you. But yeah, it will definitely evolve.
Yeah.
I also think it's good, and I know you're a little concerned maybe, but the seven member, but I like the stakeholder makeup, you know? I think with the evolution and the change that we've seen, to have a defined, how's this going to affect tourism? How's this going to affect the business community? How's this have affected? So I really like that stakeholder makeup, and I think it's warranted and needed, and I think it's going to be a nice addition to Team Temecula.
I'll speak from experience then. I think seven years on the review board. It really gives you a chance to hone in on the historic nature, and it gives you a real good chance to hone in on all of the Old Town and really, really understand all the issues. Whereas we have the whole city, it's hard to focus on some of those. So I think that's a move in the right direction for sure. I like the makeup absolutely, although I agree with Lanay, seven may not be, but I also agree with Adam. In this case, it's probably appropriate. One thing I noticed when I was on it, when the economy went sour, so did our meeting frequency. So, you know, Old Town hit a stretch there where there wasn't much of anything going on. And, but when there was, it was very interesting from my viewpoint, from perspective. So I think whoever is interested in that kind of thing will find it very gratifying to serve in on that advisory role. And the way you have it set up, I couldn't find any suggestions to improve it. So, good work. I support it.
Fernando?
I just had one question. Any project that would come before the Planning Commission would be required to get a recommendation for approval through this body? Or would it be you would have to receive approval through them first, and then they would have to come over here to the Planning Commission?
So if there was a project being proposed in Old Town and it was ready for hearing, the first stop would be the Old Town Local Advisory Committee. They'd take a look at it, they'd review it per the specific plan. They might make some recommendations, give some feedback. And then that advice or that feedback would then be presented as part of the staff report to the Planning Commission. So we would explain that we went to the Old Town Local Advisory Committee, here's the input they gave. What do you want to do with it?
Great. Yeah?
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
So with the architect and the engineer, tell me what, why specifically do we need an architect and engineer on that advisory committee?
Just their knowledge, their professional knowledge about the development process. So with these different organizations, the VTV, The Chamber, they may not necessarily have that expertise. Might be more marketing or different ideas for Old Town, but.
So if anything being built that's new in Old Town, is what you're talking about?
Okay.
Or redevelopment.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Remodels.
Adam?
Another question for curiosity for the, I guess it would be the four stakeholders that are businesses. Is it required that they're an employee? Like, The Chamber has volunteers. Their board members might be volunteers. And I'm just thinking for making sure that it's clear what their term is going to be, right? So like if The Chamber were going to have a three-year position, assuming it's another three-year type of an appointment, but it's one of their volunteer board members that maybe doesn't get reelected within that three-year term, I'd hate to see that break up.
It's a great question. I don't know the answer to that. I think it would be professional paid staff. That's my understanding.
I just see that, I mean, and obviously paid staff could have that same thing come up, but just maybe if you're kind of working through or having that discussion or haven't had it. But I've seen other organizations where I'm on that they have a board member who's a volunteer, and then when they either term out or don't get reelected, they by definition have to fall off in that position. And I would hate to see that have a negative effect on this.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Fernando, do we cut you off or you go?
It's okay.
Good?
I feel the same. Five, I think five would be great. Seven's a lot, it's just a smaller area. It's not that big. But I guess the more opinion, since it's not a real, I don't want to say it's not a real group, I'm just saying that they don't make the final decision, maybe a lot of more recommendation is probably a positive thing, so.
I just don't know where we would cut or recommend, oh, let's get rid of this, you know what I mean? So yeah, I think that's, that's, that's why I agree with the makeup of it, and I think that'll kind of solve out that problem versus, for lack of a better descriptive word, but seven random members. But it's clearly to find out, and I don't see how we could get rid of one of those that the input would be too important, too valuable.
I think, I think kind of going along with what Adam was saying, the main thing I would recommend if I was recommending something is that those seven people are completely committed to be at those, especially if it's just a once-a-month meeting. Because if you don't have all seven of those people, right? Anyway, I just think that would be something to really emphasize that if they really want to be on this committee, they really have to commit to that meeting. You know, because, you know, I mean, we're lucky we have, you know, typically have two meetings a month. But just one meeting a month, you've got seven people that you're counting on being there, they got to commit to be there, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. I do think the complexity of some of the issues and the ability to network through that Old Town Local Advisory Committee will carry a lot of weight. It'll be, it'll be interesting to see who gets appointed on the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Lanay, I see your point, and I think that's, I think the challenge of there is one is going to be driving that to those four organizations that are appointing someone from within. Because obviously, when City Council, when all these applications go, that's taken into consideration and understanding that. But for those four, so I just think maybe making sure, driving that message back to those organizations of the time commitment, the expectation, the importance of them being there. Because it sounds like City Council, when doing that, is going to be working strictly off the recommendation or appointee of those organizations.
Thanks for that feedback.
Okay, I think we have agreement on the five and seven in that it would be great to have five, but seven makes a lot of sense in this. I think the real challenge is going to be managing the running of the meetings. And, you know, that's something, it's just going to take experience and you work through as you go along. I do have a question and then some comments. My question is, given the stakeholders, is there going to be a requirement that every member is a resident of the city of Temecula? For instance, if they were to, say The Chamber was to choose somebody from the board, there's a pretty good chance that they're not a resident of Temecula. They could be very well a resident of Marietta or Menifee or, for that matter, Lake Elsinore. So that's something to work through, whether residence is required. Now, I will tell you that, given that it's an advisory committee, I know that there's no state requirement. I was on two advisory committees for the city of Marietta for years. I helped them get their business development organization hired and that, and I was on another advisory committee. So the key there was having a business in the area, a business in town. Then I was considered a business owner resident. So there's a number of ways to look at it as my point. And if it's not something that's worked out now, it definitely needs to be worked out before we go and start nominations.
Yeah, these are good, good points you're making.
Yeah.
Yeah, in anticipation of the twenty-seventh, I can talk to Luke about this.
Yeah, okay. Couple of things, I had a conversation with Luke about this, and I think one of the key things that we're looking for, the city is looking for from this organization, is for another organization to help hold businesses and residents, but particularly businesses, accountable for being put on the good side, not the bad side. And, you know, and I believe that, we hope that the association as well will be one of those players that help us to hold everybody accountable and that this may help to resolve some of the issues that we have there and not have the Planning Commission be put in the kind of situation we were last year where we had to look at, you know, removing a CUP. So that there's other methods, you know, in our toolbox to put pressure on to get people behaving, behaving well. The other item that we talked about that I think needs to be flushed out as well is communication. I see that this is an advisory group that will perhaps provide advice to a lot of, you know, several different commissions, including Community Services as well as City Council. And I think in some cases, the advice that comes for us in our, in the decisions that we make that are land-based decisions, we probably need to have some communication directly with them. We talked about the idea of having one or two joint workshops per year to have discussions, to be able to share our concerns with them and their concerns with us, their recommendations to us. And so that's something else that, you know, needs to be flushed out. I know, you know, we haven't flushed it out yet, but.
Yeah, no, that's good. And communication with the Planning Commission, communication with the City Council.
Right.
The other commissions. Yeah, very good.
Yeah. So, you know, that it doesn't necessarily put, I know they, you know, you can do reports in a meeting, and those reports can be presented, but it puts a lot of pressure on you to say, to represent what they meant in the meeting, where sometimes if that's, in addition to that, we have direct communication, then we can flush out, you know, did you really mean this? Or do you still think this today? You know, this was, six months ago you had this discussion? You know, those kinds of conversations. I think the workshop we've had with City Council has shown there's a great value in having more dialogue face-to-face. And, you know, I think yesterday in particular, City Council benefited from ours to them, particularly since there was four of them and, you know, there's being, splitting on issues. I think it helps them to have another body that says, here's, you know, here's how we each feel, so.
Yeah, agreed.
Gary, go ahead.
This is from Marcella. Would this commission be subject to the Brown Act and all facets that we are? And would the members be subject to financial disclosures on the Form 700?
So typically, this is a board that's appointed, it would be typically subject to the Brown Act. And I would have to look into the Form 700 issue, but I think typically all of our boards do, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Oh, not required. Oh, okay, so they're not required. Yeah, so they are, so not required to file Form 700s, but they are subject to other rules and regulations.
That's good. My concern was there may be members that wouldn't be too happy disclosing all their financial, for whatever reason, privacy or whatever, but that's all. If they're not required to do that, then that eliminates that concern. Thank you.
So, you know, I think this is, it's a great idea. Perhaps having a committee up and running with seven members in March may be a little on the, you know, soon side, particularly since I think there are, you know, still things to flush out, so.
Yeah, I think the appointments will be made in February. We're going to target March. March would be a meet and greet and establish chair and vice chair and talk about the future.
So I gather this is not, the nomination process has already begun then? I mean, the, these organizations have already been told about this and are thinking about it and everything.
So the City Council passed a resolution.
Okay, yeah.
Re-establishing the Old Town Local Review Board as the advisory. Re-establishing the Old Town Local Review Board as the advisory committee.
Good, okay, so it's well underway.
So is Luke over that? Is that his responsibility? Or who, are you over that?
It's going to be Luke to begin, for sure, and then probably myself and Stuart, and there will be heavy involvement from all of us in community development.
Good, awesome.
It won't be just one person.
Awesome, okay.
Okay, thank you, that was very informative. Commission reports, anybody have anything to report, since it's been, what, two and a half months, or two months, or?
Yeah, been a while. I'm glad you brought up the meeting yesterday, because I was just going to formally thank everybody. I think those are very productive meetings, that when we're able to have kind of those joint conversations. In addition to having dialogue with them, I find a lot of times that, you know, either my thoughts or their thoughts then trigger another thought, and then, you know, a different point of view. So I think they're really productive. I don't know how much need there will be moving forward, but I definitely like the idea of something large like that, having those continued opportunities. So I definitely want to go on record saying that. Second, I was going to point out, I'm not sure how busy Ron's been, I'm sure we're here right now with all the storm stuff, but for the most part, it seems like we've done a pretty good job maintaining, I know there's some potholes and stuff out there. We'll reiterate for anyone listening, if there are road concerns, I've seen a few posts, quite a few posts actually on social media, the City of Temecula app, awesome way to just report those and get, get the attention over where it needs to go. But pretty impressed to see, considering you turn on the news and see what some of the other city roads and streets and challenges they've had, I think we've managed fairly well. So good job.
I think we also have that ribbon cutting, or whatever you want to call it, on the 14th, right? For...
Correct, that'll be for the I-15 Ox Lanes.
Yeah.
So that'll be on the 14th, correct?
At, is that at noon, or at 10?
I believe it's at noon, I think you're right.
And where exactly is that going to be? Where are we meeting?
By Esporta in the Gateway Center on Temecula Parkway.
Okay. Yeah, I was thinking that, I think that would be a really important one, that if anybody can be to that, I'm going to plan on being there.
Yeah, we'll have everybody that was part of that project, which is Caltrans, RCTC, WRCOG, City Marietta contributed some funding. So there will be, there'll be quite a few people there.
Yeah, and I also wanted to reiterate what Adam said. I think, you know, as long as I've been on commission, we have never done that with city council, and I think it was extremely valuable. I mean, I took a day off work, I think several of us did, to be able to do that, and so that's how important it is to me. I would hope that we would, especially on the subject matter that we talked about, that we can continue those if we need to, or anything like that, that we need to. But I do feel like it's valuable for both bodies. And, what else has happened? Man, it's been a while. Christmas break, yeah, all of that. Anyway, yeah, that's, I think I'm good.
Gary?
Yeah, did I miss the invitation on the 14th?
I didn't get one either.
You should not have been missed, but I'll find out what's going on with emails. We've had a problem with email circulation lately, we heard it from traffic commission too. So I'll check to see what's going on with your emails right away.
Ron, would that be available under the press release?
Yes, the press release is available, and there's a flyer also. So we'll make sure you get it. It is February 14th, noon, at the Esporta Fitness.
Okay, just bring your heart, okay.
We wanted it February 14th because we did the French Valley groundbreaking February 14th last year.
Okay.
That was last year.
And then just, finally, I just want to thank a couple of people. First of all, our first responders, and that includes the Border Patrol and the police and the fire, just do a great job every single day, and they very rarely get complimented, I think. So I thank them, and we all thank them for their efforts. And then the second thing, I have praised our planning staff because I think they're the best around, period. What I have never done, though, is praise our legal help. So I just want to thank Maricela for providing excellent service to all of us in matters that are of legal concern, and helping the commission move forward. So appreciate your help, Maricela, thank you very much.
And appreciate for the long drives you have.
So that's it.
Fernando?
Is this the reporter?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to say we had a great time at the Christmas party, I mean, the Christmas party, the Christmas parade. It felt like a party. But hopefully, and hoping this year will create something.
Not hoping, we're doing a float. Remember, we planned it and everything, come on dude.
Kind of.
So we're planning it?
Yeah.
I mean, we were talking about it.
Fernando and I were there, and we were...
We took notes and everything.
Yeah.
So... And congratulations to new chair. And I think that's it.
Well, I have a poker game that night, but I'm willing to have it put off to attend. Yeah, we could have poker on the boats. So, you know, I also want to just mention the meeting yesterday, I think it was a great, great meeting. And I also wanted to acknowledge and appreciate those residents and business owners and property owners, everybody else that showed up. There was, I was surprised how many people were there, given the weather and everything. But, you know, even though we had just a couple people speak, having their interest and they seeing us having this conversation, seeing how complex the conversation, that our intention is to bring as much balance as we can, and that safety is, is, you know, top of the list and on our mind, I think helps them feel that we've got things under control, we're interested, we're, we feel any pain than anybody feels, and we're doing the best we can to, to make those changes. And, you know, if, if anyone can't, can't say that council or commissions don't act quickly, at the very least, they can say, our staff acts quickly, and brings things to, you know, the various governing bodies and advisory bodies to work on those issues, and they always come with great advice, being prepared, and, you know, the one thing I really appreciate above everything else that all you guys do is how prepared you are in any conversation that we have. So, so thank you. And I will commit to being at the parade this year. And helping with the float, yeah. So with that, we have, I don't think we had any subcommittees?
Yeah.
We did? Okay.
You want to do it? Sure? The, what subcommittee was it? Old Town, I think.
The hotel.
It's not on there, though. Anyhow, it was a subcommittee dealing with the...
That's the Old Town.
Yeah.
The hotel, not the Truax Hotel, the other one.
Oh, the other one, okay.
Over on...
First.
First.
Yeah.
And I don't have a lot to report, other than the applicant is still working with staff to resolve the issues that were brought up that resulted in us continuing that for another hearing. They are making progress, but it's not 100%, so they're still trying to come to an agreement. And I think the primary intent, correct me if I'm wrong Lanay, the primary intent was to make sure they were complying with the specific plan, the Old Town specific plan, and still meet the requests of the staff, who had concerns beyond maybe the letter of the law and the specific plan. So they're continuing to work that out, and that will come before the commission sometime in the near future. At least, that was the last information we got. So I think that's all I want to say. Do you want to add anything to that? Matt, did you want to?
No, I think you hit it. I mean, they're, they are working with staff and they are making progress.
Great. So that's, it was a long time ago we met, so I almost forgot about it.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's, got to do a lot of thinking. Community development report?
Just wanted to say thank you for participating in the joint workshop. I think your input was valuable, I think it was well found out, and I think it helped because it's a complex issue we're dealing with. Live outdoor entertainment, type 90s, indoor, the closing time issue, so, and I think city manager did a good job of trying to summarize after each of the major sections what was going on, and part of his summary was, we're split. So we'll continue to move this forward. It's going to involve an update to the development code, an update to the Old Town specific plan, then we're going to have to look at the live entertainment license regulations. So there's some moving parts. As we get a little farther down the line, there will be some subcommittees, and then it'll go to the planning commission, city council, and then probably with the Old Town Local Advisory Committee up and running, we'll loop them in as well. So this is a priority, and we were given a four to five-month timeframe, so we know what we're working on.
So no anticipation of a third workshop?
At this time, no. At this time, no.
Thank you, Matt. And go to Public Works and see how things are flooding.
Well, it's been, as Adam mentioned, it's been pretty good. We had a large, large event, and we haven't had any major issues. There's been some reports of, you know, some pooling of water, you know, maybe some potholes, but we have not had anything major occur in the city. So it's been really, really good from that aspect, knowing how much rain we actually did get. So things are going good there. Wanted to let you know most of the things that this group should be aware of. Alter is starting on getting some construction water, because they're going to be starting their clearing and kind of some minimal grading, so therefore, they're doing a tie-in for some recycled water, so if you see some activity, that's what's happening, starting this week. And then also, this Tuesday at council meeting, this coming Tuesday, we will be taking their acquisition agreement, it'll be on consent, it'll be on the agenda, and that is for them to acquire certain slivers of property along Moraga and Rancho California Road in order to make those improvements that they are conditioned for. So a little bit wider on Moraga, a little bit wider on Rancho Cal, and they've got some signal work to do. That's one of their first thresholds, they need to get that work done prior to getting going on, you know, most of the project. And so that will be on consent, but then part of new businesses, their CFD is going to council, so it'll be approval of getting that formation going for their CFD that they're going to implement. And then we have the Stampede parking lots going to council as well, authorizing the construction of that, so the Stampede parking lot will be redone, and that's per the agreement we had with flood control when they did the improvements. If you recall, there was a portion that was acquired, reconfiguration, there's going to be 27 new spaces, new grading, and that will start right after our big events. So after rod, after, after the rod run, after July 4th parade, after the concert, so we're looking like a July 8th starting date, but we're getting in front of council now. And then that'll be, we'll do our project in conjunction with the owners of the Stampede that are actually doing an expansion, so they have an expansion coming. And that's all I have for you tonight, unless you have some questions.
I have a pothole comment.
Sure.
So coming here tonight, there's a really good size one, crossing Rancho California Road, going into Old Town. So like, sorry. So if you go up Rancho Cal to go to Duluz, that first left, that kind of goes the back way into Old Town, I can't remember the name of that street.
That's Moraga.
That was Moraga, yeah, I thought so. Right there, like, cross, right there at the light, there's like, where you have to go around it. Like, I had to go to the left, and I didn't almost run into somebody, but, just saying, I had to, I couldn't go over the pothole, so it's pretty good size.
Yeah, and I'll note that down, take care of that, and when you go around that back way and you go down Felix Valdez, that, that road is in really bad shape, and we are working at getting that into our rotation of getting it fixed. But that's not an easy one, because it's not a slurry, that's going to be a full grind and overlay, a complete R and R rehab.
Well, thanks for all you do. I know you guys keep up with it as best you can, so that's...
Thank you.
The biggest one I noticed.
Okay.
Anyway, thanks.
Yeah, I, something I've noticed is the lack of flooding on Jefferson, as, you know, we've had, it doesn't take much rain in the past to flood things, but things are way, way better from a street flooding perspective than I've seen in a long, long time. So whatever Metropolitan Water District is doing to flush the sewers out, or whatever we're doing to clear, clear the roads, it's definitely working.
Thank you.
So the other thing about potholes is, I've been out a lot in, through town in the last couple days, and, you know, I'm, I'm seeing the effects now, where there wasn't much stuff coming up, it's starting to come up fairly quickly, and I think that'll probably continue for a couple more days. But, you know, that's just every year, that's the normal.
All right, thank you.
So thanks. So that is it. I will adjourn this meeting till February 21st at 6:00 PM, we're right here in council chambers.
Yeah? Yeah, do that.